If you wouldn't mind. Okay, we're gonna call to order the town Andover Board of Selectmen. Special meeting budget workshop for Monday, March 6, 2023 at 7:03 PM. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
God.
Indivisible, liberty.
Justice.
For all.
Excellent, thank you. We're gonna move on to a public speak, join Ebert.
Thanks.
Okay. And telephone number, I'm not sure if that's Dennis, but telephone number at the bottom.
Yes, it's Dennis.
Dennis, how are you, sir? All right. Glad you've been joining us, Dennis.
I'm fine, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so last meeting, we we had gone through budget line by line with Eric and he had highlighted some items for us to consider and come back and vote. So Paula wanted to be more organized as we move forward. So Eric, what items are you, other than the yellow ones, do you want us to deal with today?
Okay, so I'm gonna share a screen real quick, I think.
Sure.
Uh, let's hope I get the right one. Okay, so these are the items you asked me to put on this meeting's agenda to review. A couple of them we might not get till next meeting, but these were the things you wanted to discuss and then also talk about the salaries. So number one was add money under budget line item 339.
Eric, are you sharing? Are you sharing?
Uh, I thought I was.
Can't see it.
Okay.
There we go.
Am I sharing now?
Yes, of course, sir.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Uh, so item number one, add $35,000 to the budget underlying 339 for RAV4 hybrid vehicle for senior transportation. Um, Jeff had done a bunch of research on costs. It looks like 35,000 should cover. Jeff, do you have more info regarding that?
No, they're looking into it and seeing if they can comply with the state buying program and see what they can give us for a figure. But that's for budgetary, I think that's probably good. We're probably coming a little bit less than that, but we should just probably budget for it, just in case there's any price increases and we don't get it until this fall or this year when the new models are out.
Okay, so do we just wanna make a motion for that one? Do we wanna make a motion for each one of these as he goes through it, or do we want Eric to run through them?
I think, um, I don't know, I'm inclined to say one at a time unless somebody disagrees.
No, I have no problem with that. Jeff, when did you say Adrian was getting on?
He's on now.
Oh.
Six six two, who's his?
Can't see the phone number. Okay, so Adrian's on, so let's make a motion on the, the, I mean, all right, let's discuss the, the, the vehicle for senior transportation. Does anyone have a problem with that vehicle or a vehicle for senior transportation?
The only thing I was throwing out there is we can get a minivan for 3,000 more. I don't know what the wish list is, but I think probably once this is approved, we could probably get the minivan for 35,000. So we could probably get a choice of either or when the time comes.
Okay, I mean, we don't have to put in, in the motion that we're gonna buy a specific vehicle.
That's what I'm saying. I just say we add $35,000 for a hybrid vehicle for senior transportation or just for a vehicle.
Yeah.
Seconded.
General, yeah.
All right, so what's the motion? Uh, 35,000. Jeff Murray, make the motion for this one.
I'd like to make the motion to add $35,000 to the budget underlying 339 for a hybrid vehicle for senior transportation.
I'll second.
Seconded.
Okay, all right, further discussion on that item? Uh, let's vote, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So four, nothing.
Okay, item number two, add $30,000 to the budget under the building maintenance fund earmarked towards improvements for the Andover Museum slash Old Town Hall. And again, this is the easiest way to do that, put the money in the building maintenance fund, but just state right up front that the reason why we're increasing that is so that we can make improvement to the museum, so we can satisfy the state historic preservation office so that we can build the senior transportation, uh, facility.
Okay, um, is that enough?
Thirty thousand.
I'm just wondering, should we be specific on what we're using it for, like a door replacement, window replacement, what are we really doing there?
I, I think the, the priority is number one, door replacements, which we have to do anyway, because we have two, actually three doors where the sills are completely rotted out. So that's the first thing. And then the second priority is redoing the ceiling in the, the low uh, roofed front entrance area of the museum. Those are the two. And then after that would be addressing, uh, addressing windows. But we're not, you know, the 30,000 isn't gonna stretch to addressing windows. Um, and I think we have some flexibility if we end up spending more than that. I mean, we do have, because this is a building maintenance fund, we can just take additional money from the building maintenance fund, you know, depending on how far out this goes. And the other thing is that as long as we have money committed and we know we're agreeing to do this, it doesn't even say we have to do it this year. So we can potentially put this project off as long as we're earmarking some funds for in a permanent fund.
Is this the correct, is this the correct amount for what, what they're looking for?
Um, as close as I could.
Amount, wasn't it?
Well, it was not a specific amount, but um, but I think something in the $30,000 range would make them happy. I mean, they haven't outright told me, you know, you have to spend X or we won't approve it. But I, I think that's in the range that we need to be contemplating for them.
Can you get that number? Like what X is, like what they require us to spend? Like what if it's $50,000? I mean, I'm not even worried about the downside, but what if it's $50,000?
Then we take an extra 20 out of the existing building maintenance fund and we prioritize that next year, or we put it off the following year. And, you know, we decrease the fund 10,000 this year and 10,000 next year.
Yeah, my issue is I just wanna make sure that we specify that's what the improvements we're gonna do, because we get to the budget hearing. I just wanna make sure that we highlight that it's to replace the rotten doors, replace the ceiling. You know, just, we should probably specify what we're using that money for, because I'm sure we're gonna get asked.
Well, they can go visit.
Yeah, I know, they can go visit, but you know how the meetings go. I just, the more information we can put up front, probably the better.
Well, it's, you know. Well, let's make a motion on that one, because we need to build the other building.
Okay.
So who wants to make that one, this motion?
I can do it if you want.
Sure.
I'd like to make the motion to add $30,000 to the budget under the build maintenance fund earmarked towards improvements to the Andover Museum Old Town Hall to replace rotting doors and ceiling repairs.
I'll second.
Second, all right, further discussion on this item? No, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four, nothing. Increase funding for rec programs by $10,000 to support a paid staff working on programming for the department.
So this was in, this was something you asked to put in the budget at the last meeting to do a better job of, uh, supporting all of the rec programs that the town is currently running, which are now run 100% by volunteer effort, or mostly.
Is that enough money?
Actually. How much are you putting in?
$10,000.
Yeah, I think it's enough to start.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay.
I mean, remember this, we're trying to do baby steps here, so that we have this money in and then once the community center's up and running, we can then expand that out if we need to, you know.
Eric, do you have a line item for that one?
Uh, yes, hang on.
So, 603-870? 4503 rec commission. You went past it.
Okay, you see that screen? Oh, okay.
4153, yep. Little bit higher. Oh, actually, they're not sequenced. It's on row 40, uh, row 396, keep going, sorry, 100, 100 rows down. They're not sequenced in order. There you go.
Yeah, so I just put it, what I did for right now until you make that decision is put a placeholder in in programs, and then if you make that decision, I'll add a line item for, you know, essentially salary there's, if, if that's how you wanna do it.
Um, Eric, you said it's, you, you got a note here for reviewed by Carol, she's reviewed this?
Well, not that part.
Okay.
She reviewed, she reviewed all the rec commission budget, but obviously she's in Hawaii. I haven't, you know, said to, to Carol, you know, interrupted or on her vacation.
Yep, gotcha. I just didn't know if she had gotten hold of you and reviewed it or not.
Nope, so maybe. We'll get rid of that.
Okay.
All right, so.
Just a note of reference, we probably shouldn't be saying when people are somewhere or somewhere else, like, you know, Carol's not putting it out there on social media, I don't think so. Let's not do that here, all good.
That's a good point, my apologies.
Thank you.
So uh, Eric, put your other screen up. There it is, back to it. Sorry, I got too many things open. No, you're good, you're good right here. Um, so I'll make a motion to increase funding for uh, the rec commission budget 4503 line. I don't even know how you look at the lines on these, Eric. Do you, do you use 55990 or 603870? What do you use?
Hang on.
How do you wanna reference it?
Uh, programs.
Okay, so I can get on with it. All right, go back to the other screen. So I'll make a motion to increase funding for the recreation commission budget line or budget 4503 line 603-870.55990, $10,000 to support, uh, paid staff or programming to benefit the total community, seniors and children.
I'll second.
Further discussion on that item, anybody? No, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, item number four, keep or eliminate the temp help position for Public Works, which is 3001-100-51,000 Public Works, uh, temp salary. So again, this was the ask by Scott to essentially fund a part-time position to deal with field stuff. Which I, I totally get his frustration with the level of input he's had to have into the field for field maintenance. You know, and the question is, do we try to use, do we try to hire somebody to do that? Or do we just flat out, uh, assign that to, uh, Jay and say, have Public Works make this happen, which is the other possibility.
Uh, can we push this one off of Scott's back for our next meeting?
Yep, certainly can.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Is Jay on tonight?
Jay is not on tonight.
When is Jay's schedule? Next week?
Jay will be back next week. Yeah, unfortunately or fortunately, his wife bought him surprise tickets to the uh, Yukon Women's Basketball, you know, finals. Uh, and told them this afternoon. Um, so he was a little bit mortified that, uh, but.
So he's good, good to go. So let's just push, we're gonna push that one along, man.
Yeah, if we can get a list of what Scott's looking for, I just wondered if we can just contract this or if we can just do it through employees.
Yeah, that's my question as well.
You know, if we can have a landscaping company or somebody manage, you know, manage it, then I'd rather do that, if possible.
And I think, I think he said last meeting, he was talking to Christine Randazzo, who has a landscaping company. I think she hadn't gotten back to him, so I don't know if that's what he was talking to her about, so he might have.
Really, the bulk of the, yeah, I thought the bulk of what he's looking for is help with the sprinkler system, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
If I understood him correctly, and it's from conversations, he's just looking for someone to check it out in the mornings and make sure there's no problems, because that's, that's always what he was doing. He was going over there to make, to check on it, see if it was running properly, and if it was not, he was troubleshooting. And that's what he's after. So that's why he believes Public Works would be the best for it, you know.
All right, let's, let's wait for Scott and try to sort that.
Yeah, and if that, if that's your statement, that if they're looking for the sprinkler system, Public Works might be the best option then, because they do do their drive around in the morning, and they can just make that a stop.
Yeah, so let's have Scott go through what he has to do to, what he does personally to deal with that. Okay. Next one.
Okay, item number five, I sent you all today the Jay's revised, uh, cost spreadsheet. Um, and then, which was the Capitol Roads spreadsheet. And then I also sent you like a two-page Word doc that was basically the, the outlines of the pavement management plan that we have kind of in place. Um, the real bottom line is, there, there's kind of two takeaways. The first is, last year we overspent. But the reality is, we had to do the reclamation last year, because if not, we were gonna lose our grant funding. Um, and, you know, that was, the cost basis for doing that was much higher last year than we anticipated. Um, in fact, the cost of doing it last year with the grant would have been the same as the cost doing it, you know, the year before without the grant, which is kind of scary. Um, you know, similarly, when we really look at chip seal, the cost of chip seal per square yard is up about 60% over what it was three years ago, four years ago. So we are looking at some pretty significant, uh, cost increases with that. Um, you know, however, we're doing reasonably well overall in town. So if you wanted to say, let's level fund on today's basis what it would cost to stay on the seven-year track for touching all of our roads, um, that would equate to increasing the road improvement fund from about 330,000 to about 375,000, uh, to keep pace with increased costs. So those are where the numbers kind of work out. Um, the other real issue that Public Works faces is that they count on leaving a fair amount of money to be spent, you know, between, say, March and July 1, when the new budget year starts. Because to get all the road work done, you really need to do a bunch of it before July 1. Um, and because we overspent fairly considerably last year, we took that reserve cushion that we had been maintaining, um, and we spent, we spent the heck out of it. So we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have to deal with that over the next couple of years. We're just not gonna have that nicer cushion that we had in years previous. That's kind of the nut, the summary of that.
That's just the spring though, right?
Uh, what do you mean?
The, you're saying we're not gonna have that because of the, because we overspent last year. So going into this is spring, we don't have the funds that we normally would have, right?
Correct, correct. Right now, you could, you could say we have about $100,000 we can spend before July 1 in that ballpark. Whereas most years, at this time, we have somewhere in the range of 300,000. Because we tend to do all the shim prior to, and the total cost for the shim run a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, and at the same time, you know, we're doing the catch basin cleaning and we may be doing the guardrails and some of the other stuff too. So we count on.
Don't we have another, don't we have another tar payment coming in?
We already got the tar payment.
You did get it, okay.
Yep.
So that's basically, so basically you're saying we have the tar payment we can use.
Right. Yes. But when, when I, right. But that's it. I mean, our road improvement fund has zero in it.
Can we start? Can we use those funds though, instead of spreading them thin on chip or something else? Can we use them to start prep for drainage on road, on a road that we need to do anyways? So the guys have something they can dig into that's gonna take time, but not necessarily a lot of money and get ready for a fall project that we can then do? Elijah, how are we addressing this?
So, yes, the, the first thing is, we're, we're probably going to have to put off some of the early shim work that we would like to do. Uh, because you're right, we are gonna need to divert some money into replacing, because last year we also depleted a lot of our stock in catch basins and basin tops and pipe and stuff like that. So what we're going to do is, we're gonna do the minimum, at the minimum, we need to function right now between July 1. Um, you know, but get Public Works in as early as possible, starting on Hendy with the drainage. With the plan being doing Hendy, that section of Long Hill Road between Hendy and Skinner. What? Oh, sorry. And then Skinner, two-wheeling and beyond, if we can get to it. And the, the major drainage effort this year be doing that stretch.
And, and this may be a Jay question, but is there a reason we haven't put funds in this budget, even if it's 30,000 or 40,000, to replace some of those supplies, so that we have some supplies on hand?
In which budget? Meaning next year's budget?
Coming up, yeah, next year's budget. Do we have, are we putting funds on the table to be able to have, replace some of those basin caps and things like that that we need to, to have on hand to some extent?
Yes, in fact, if you look in, let me bring up the transfer over the capital budget. If you look at drainage, there's, you know, a fairly good, this is basically cost for materials for drainage to restock, because up until this year, you know, we, we've maintained a fairly significant stock. We drained it down last year, now we're going to refill it and keep using it.
Okay.
So yes, there is a fair bit of money in there for replacement of supplies.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Did answer that question?
Yep, I'm good.
So Eric, if, if you're, you're basically saying it takes us approximately, it, it current cost $17 million to redo all of the Andover roads?
If you wanted to, so eventually everything has to get reclaimed. You know, you can go a long time before you reclaim it, but eventually everything would get reclaimed. And reclaiming everything once is about 17 million. Uh, but we're not gonna do a whole lot of reclaiming, just because the cost basis for that is prohibitive. So what I'm doing is every time I get a chance that there's a grant where I can apply for funding or partial funding to do some reclaiming and repaving, we will. And we're gonna prioritize kind of the backbone roads, which is why we did the first section of Long Hill. The first section is shoddy, and now we're looking at the section of Hendy to Long Hill to Skinner. Um, to see whether we can reclaim significant sections of the backbone. Um, that's, that's kind of the goal there.
Okay, so we're going to take this information that you did and we're gonna meet with Jay next week? Accurate?
Yep, that's totally accurate. I mean, I'll, I'll answer other questions if you, you have them, but, um, I think you probably ought to wait for his input, but I, I can give you the big picture numbers that given the cost increases in material costs and the cost to do work, you know, you're definitely looking at increasing the road improvement fund if you wanna maintain something level with what we've been doing the last few years.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the document that Eric provided us, or any questions, thoughts related to what we need to look at?
As you're talking. Like basically where we wanna, sounds like this, we wanna wait until we talk to Jay before we make any moves. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, four and five should be waited, we should wait on four and five, do we have the people present?
Okay. That's fine, we'll do that next week. So item six.
So I also sent you as a group, a, basically, an outline of how it would work. So as most of you know, we do have, uh, a RFP out for a planning firm to do the plan of conservation and development. Um, the committee picked who they wanted as a vendor. Um, and then, you know, we also started exploring what would happen if instead of doing just the P O C D, we hired this person for two years uh, with the primary goal of hiring them be the P O C D, but also to provide some of the other planning services, um, and how that would look like budgetarily. So this is basically how it would work. We would need to add about 36,000 to this year's budget. We would then reduce the legal and professional line item, which covered some of that, uh, by 5,000. We would no longer fund the P O C D implementation fund, because we would be getting our P O C D with our own planner, not by hiring outside firm. So that would save us $5,000. And then we would take money from the existing P O C D implementation fund and offset the cost of the planner for the next two years. Um, now we still have to do a little research in this, because there's only $24,000 in the P O C D implementation fund. And there should be like around 40, and I don't understand where the difference is. That's gonna take some digging, because I thought, starting right at the end of the last P O C D cycle, the Board of Finance, uh, funded it every year, which should put us at about 40,000 now. Um, so, so we gotta do some historical research and find out why there's only 24,000 in that fund currently. But that's basically. But that's basically how the math will, would work. Um, we do have Bill Warner is on for the next meeting to uh, be there to answer any questions you may have um, about what a planner could do for the town. Um, he's not the planner we would be hiring, but I think it's good to have somebody that can talk to you that, you know, essentially is not seeking the job here, but we'll, we'll talk to you about what a planner can do for a small town.
So if your numbers are correct, you're talking about a thirteen thousand dollar increase in the overall budget for the planner in this fiscal year, or the budgeted fiscal year that we're talking?
Uh, it would be a twenty six thousand dollar increase. Right? Because-
Isn't the Board of Finance gonna use thirteen thousand dollars from the implementation fund?
No, that's gonna be in, in addition to the thirty, the thirty six thousand. So what they, what, what they wanted for just the P O C D was around seventy two thousand. Um, what, uh, and I asked a couple of the other towns that they work for. What he, what their planning firm does is when they assign somebody at the town, you know, you basically, we're gonna take him in a one, one day a week increment. So, and they charge forty eight thousand bucks a year for that. So it's a big chunk of change. Um, but if you think about it, our cost just to do the P O C D would be around seventy two, which is way more than we had. So, um, you know, now we're spending ninety six, but we're also getting, you know, additional planning services above and beyond the uh, the P O C D. So that, that would be how it would work. And again, I suggest you wait and talk to the planner before you make any kind of decisions. Uh, but that, that's kind of what I laid out to you in, in my uh, letter to you.
So can you just clarify? So, once the initial first year is done, and we're moving forward, let's say that the, the P O C D is done, but now we're, we're using them for a town planner, what is the town planner cost per year at that point?
If we kept them at that same time, it would be forty eight thousand a year. However, I don't think we need to retain them at that same amount of time. And we have discussed reducing, you know, what it would look like to reduce their hours. But I think we could, we could end up with a number that's definitely less than that. Um, but it's not, you know, it's still gonna be a bigger number than we'd really like.
Okay, so next week, is next, is it next week Bill Warner also on?
Yes.
So we have Bill Warner and Jay?
Correct.
Right? And so four, five and six are all going to be carried over for next week? Anybody got a problem with that?
Nope.
Okay. Right? Do we have uh, anything else that we want to do related to the budget? Individual line items? Anybody want to sit there and discuss anything related to it? Okay, so if anyone wants to add anything to the uh, list of items for next week, let's communicate with Eric and get them on the list.
Jeff, do we still have to deal with the salaries?
Yes.
Just gonna ask that.
Um, is, is that something we want to put in just as a budgetary item and have the Board of Finance iron that out because it's eventually their decision or?
So two things. Technically, salary is your decision, um, not the Board of Finances. But it is only your decision for those employees that are uh, not selected um, and not union, because obviously there's contracts to them already. Although those are kind of your, this, union contracts are your decisions also, because ultimately you're the ones that have to ratify union contracts.
All right, so we have, we have the town administrator, the, the public works supervisor and a library director that we need to discuss. Is that accurate?
I'm, for some reason, I'm trying to pull up the other form and I'm struggling here at the moment.
It's, it's in the little box that you're seeing on your screen? Do it again.
Well, you're watching your raise go away.
God, fricking makes me crazy.
Which one are you trying to get to? You've been to that one like five times. Are you trying to get to that one? Okay, now click on it. It's, you gotta get to this, there's a little box up top, it's shrunk. There you go.
There we go. So this is the one I wanted to show you. This is basically uh, all of the employees that are under your purview. Um, last week you asked me back to put back in the salary for the first selectmen, but to set it the same as the other selectmen. So that's that. And then this is all the other employees and what's a range of raise possibilities would look like. The ones that are in green are uh, library clerks that need to come up to a dollar an hour to make minimum wage. So that's why those are in red. Those are the minimum increases you can give them. So that's what that looks like, what it looks like at a two percent, three percent and four percent.
Okay. Can you? Can you send us that spreadsheet?
Are the library numbers correct? Because it looks like all the same lines are the same number. For two percent, three percent, four percent.
Yeah, because no matter what percent, you can't give them a two, three or four percent raise, because that's below minimum wage.
Raise, I gotta get it.
Not allowed to do that. So that's the minimum, right? Yeah.
I mean, it's just a question as a group, like, and the thing is, Eric, does this spreadsheet tell us what, if we said three percent raise or four percent raise or seven percent raise, what the total increase is? Just for the items that we're trying to deal with?
Uh, so this says, if you do a two percent increase, the total cost of the town across those employees is about ten thousand. Um, and there's your range.
And that's everybody in this hall?
That's everybody that's part of that in that group. Um, and the only one I would suggest out of that is I do think you should do better than, you know, you should go for a five percent raise for Jay, because I think in this case he is worth that uh, that raise. But that's just what I think. You may think something different.
Does anyone want to sit there and uh, well, let's, let's, so we get it out in the open, what are the union raises this year?
Uh, two point nine percent. For MEIU, we don't have a contract for either the current year or the next year with Afsmi yet, so no idea what that will be, but we're certainly assuming it's gonna be the same as uh, as MEIU. So if you said- If you wanted, you could, you could simply match and say two point nine percent and recalculate based on that, if that was your preference or, or whatever you so choose.
So if we said three percent, our total cost increase is fourteen thousand dollars. A little less than that, but thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Correct.
We scroll up a little bit and see the other positions too, just as we're all talking about everything. Okay, that looks better.
Maybe I can go down one more.
I would, I would make a motion that we do a two point nine percent raise to match what the um, what the union's getting for those employees. And I would do a four percent raise for Jay. That'd be my motion.
What are you basing, what are you basing that on Adrian? What's your thought? Why do you want to do Jay at four percent instead of two, two point nine?
Because Eric said-
Well, I mean, I think Jay is definitely due. We didn't do a, we didn't do a contract renegotiation on him, so he's been off contract for a while.
I'm not challenging you just-
What everybody else got last year.
Yeah, I just wanted to see where you're, what you were thinking.
Well, I think he got what everybody else got last year, but I think also, you know, when he first came in, we were very cautious about, I guess, what we were paying him and, and if you look around at the impact he's had, I personally think that he's definitely shown some level of impact that justifies. I just don't know, I don't know that the townsfolk are gonna be okay with five percent. And I think given the level of impact he's had, he certainly deserves more than the, the, the standard. But I don't know that, I don't know that the townspeople in general are gonna say it's okay to give him a lot more. So I guess I'm splitting the difference.
Um,
you know.
He does not have a contract right now, is?
Currently, no.
Nope, he's off contract.
Should we be considering getting Jay on contract? I would consider that.
Yes, we should be considering getting Jay on contract, renewing his contract.
But, but let's, let's have an honest conversation about what, what difference does a contract make? You know, a non-compete's almost unenforceable, right? If you put him on a contract, you're telling him how, how much it's gonna make with increases, so you know.
So is Jay comfortable? We'll have to ask him next week?
Well, Jay hasn't come to us since his contract expired and it's been a while, so, you know. I mean, Jay's a manager, right? It's not up to us to go to him and ask him if he's okay with it. He should be in a position as a, as a manager to be able to come to us and say, hey, um, you know, I want a contract. He hasn't done that, so why would we go to him? That's my own take on it, but.
It's a nice gesture.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch that?
It's a nice gesture, Adrian, Adrian. That's how I look at it.
We're not talking about being nice, we're talking about management here, right? This is about being nice, it's about money.
I see, I see your point, your point.
You know, this is about business.
Well, maybe this is a conversation we need to have with Jay when he can give us his feedback.
Well, I understand Adrian that uh, you know, I, I, I think, I'm thinking like you, you are, that's why I asked about the union, because do we want to sit there and get so far out in front of the contract? And give our union uh, members? I'll second your motion, Adrian. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Um, I'll, I'll discuss it myself. I don't, I mean, it's reasonable, but it's unreasonable. It's not, it's not a, I mean, so Adrian-
Look, the value of some of the perks, the value of some of the perks that we're already giving Jay. You know, he has a, he has a town vehicle that he's allowed to take to and from. You know, he doesn't pay for gas in that vehicle. That's a, that's a pretty concise benefit in and of itself, given the cost of fuel right now. You know, so he's already reaping the benefits of some of that. That's why I don't think five percent is justified.
Okay, um, I'm assuming all these library clerks, though, that, that do we want a revised motion to, to deal with that?
Well, because the, the, the the other percentage doesn't get up there, so we have to address them at least to bring them up to minimum wage. So if you want to revise it, I'll take it, I'll, I'll, I'll second that revision that we bring the um, library employees up to minimum wage.
Or just state that all employees, uh, the minimum salary for all employees will be minimum wage. That covers it.
And any employee that's not on minimum wage would go to two point nine percent, with the exception of Jay Toto, which would go to four percent.
Except the children's librarian, which is sixteen twenty five.
Right.
Why is that one different?
Because, so she gets paid two different ways. She acts as the children's librarian. Um, and she acts as just a regular clerk, depending on what she's doing on a particular day. So she gets more money if she's working as the children's librarian.
And to be clear, it's not because I care that someone's making sixteen twenty five an hour, whatever, I was curious.
Correct.
Okay. So, let's uh, let's bring the motion as revised to a vote. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. None opposed? So we'll pass that to the Board of Finance. Okay, anything else that we need to discuss tonight before we move on? Okay. So all we have left, um, before we move to the executive session, let's uh, oh my god, my- my agenda went away. There it is. We did not uh, put public speak on the agenda. So, but we'll go to public speak before we go to executive session. So Joy and Eber, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, just here to listen to your discussion. Thanks.
Okay. All right. Somebody want to make a, a motion to move to executive session?
I make a motion to move to executive session.
Uh, and invite the town attorney.
And invite the town attorney. Are we inviting Eric too?
Yes.
Yes.
And Eric, the town administrator.
Adrian seconded. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Uh, Eric, if you could stop the recording?